Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you please stay standing for a moment of silent reflection? Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Hutton, would you please have a little call?
Mr. Hutton. Councillor Duncan. Councillor Donohue.
Here.
Councillor Eaton. Councillor Farr.
Present.
Councillor Keller. Councillor Kingberry.
Present.
Councillor Love. Councillor McKay. Councillor Miller.
Here.
Warden Murphy.
Here.
Councillor Beckett.
Present.
Councillor Reed. Councillor Reimold.
Here.
Councillor Robinson.
Present.
Councillor Stack.
Present.
Councillor Sweet.
Here.
Councillor Woodnessby Ward. Nathan, how did it work?
Thank you, Mr. Hutton. This time I'll ask if there's any disclosure of key areas or the general nature thereof for those that are here. Glenn is actually making sure we have a quorum. Yes, we have quite a few members missing today for various reasons. Can I get an adoption of the minutes of January 25th and January 31st that are on the website moved by Councillor Robinson, seconded by Councillor Sweet? Any errors or omissions? Seeing now I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Thank you. As we gather in chambers this morning, I would like to acknowledge on behalf of council in our community that we are meeting today on traditional territory of the First Nations. We would like to thank the Algonquin people and express our respect and support for their rich history. We are extremely grateful for their many and continued displays of friendship. Members of county council during the month of February, I attended 11 meetings on county business. On February 2nd, I participated in a conference call meeting of the chairs and vice chairs of the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus and the Eastern Ontario Mayor's Caucus to discuss priorities and advocacy for the 2018 year. On February 16th, I joined Chief Kirby White duck of the Algonquins of Pecrocton at a reception held by the Minister of Indigenous Relations and Reconciliation, the Honorable David Serra. The reception was to congratulate the Algonquins and the county of Renfrew on their historic memorandum of understanding in pursuing common goals and exploring those synergies for economic development opportunities and successes for both. On February 16th, I attended an emergency management meeting to review lessons learned from last year's flooding and how to move forward in case of a similar emergency. In attendance were many government agencies, including the Office of Fire and Marshals and Emergency Management, Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry, and the Ministry of Municipal Affairs, personnel from local and county roads departments, paramedics, and community emergency management coordinators from across the county. The video that was compiled by Mike Barber was very well received. The municipal 511 system was presented as a tool purchased by the county for all lower tiers as a tool for any and all emergencies. I brought greetings on behalf of county council and thanked everybody for their incredible hard work last year and for being at a meeting knowing that it probably was not a hundred year flood. Thank you to Chief Nolan for including me in this very important day. On February 24th, I presented a certificate on behalf of county council to the Douglas Lions Club recognizing their 70th trigger anniversary. Congratulations to the club on achieving this milestone. I will remind all those assembled here of the following: the county of Renfrew, experience our history, share our future. This concludes my address for this session of county council. Thank you. At this time, I will ask Mike Barber, who's behind the camera, if he'd like to introduce our first delegation.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Good morning, council, guests. As you're aware, year after year, the staff here at the county of Renfrew make payroll deductions and raise funds through various activities to donate towards the Renfrew County United Way. Again, this year, they did not disappoint, so we have a bit of a check presentation today for them. Pat Lefrenier, the executive director for Renfrew County United Way is here, and she's brought some special guests with her, so I'm going to ask them to come up if they'd like, and she can introduce the rest of her delegation. And she's going to take a few minutes just to talk to you a little bit about the United Way as well. Most of our contribution this year has come from payroll deduction, which is a very important component of our support, and we look forward to continuing to support the United Way year after year through payroll deduction and participating in some events and promotions in a partnership with them if possible as well. So without much more ado, I like to keep it short, as you know up here. I'd like to very much invite the media to come up, take a photo as well, but on behalf of the staff at the county of Renfrew, this year we'd like to make our official presentation of $3,048 towards the Renfrew County United Way. And as you're aware, the dollars raised here stay here, and this goes towards, you know, all the great things that Pat's going to tell you that they support here in the community. So we'll just give a little moment. Madam Warden, if you'd like to come down for the photo as well.
There's no trust here, is there?
Yeah.
Debbie's sitting pretty there.
We're going to pressure Debbie to come take a photo.
Do you want me to turn off the screen?
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
We don't run pictures like that very often.
Yeah, that's why. I didn't want to take it and not run it, but anyway. I'll take it, that's fine. I'm the only one here, I'll send it to you.
Thank you. Just put this here.
We'll put Pat in the middle.
Sure. Okay.
I'm the middle child.
Okay, there you go. Here, big smile. I'll change the setting. Take a couple, make sure we have a good one. Great. I'll send it to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much again. Thank you.
So Pat, if you please.
Well, I too, like Mike, am going to make this short because I sit around a table, maybe not this large, but I know when you have an agenda, a long agenda, I like to keep things a little short. That's, yeah, light reading, right? And I think it's kind of, you know, coincidental that your next presentation, I believe, is on mental health. So we're all in the same family, and I recently attended one of the homelessness initiatives meetings with Jackie Agnew at the back, and I must say that work is admirable, helping everyone who really is in crisis in our community. So no further ado, I'll get to my little presentation. I want to thank Warden Murphy, members of council, Mike Barber, Rose Gruntz, for the opportunity to just have this short presentation to, again, just wrap everyone's mind around the work of United Way, because it has changed over the years. For more than 45 years, United Way has been working as part of the fabric of this community, working with local agency partners, government stakeholders, and thousands of donors, like the ones that work here at the county of Renfrew, to change lives right here. To do this, we focus on investing resources where they're needed most, and will have the greatest impact. Furthermore, we're committed to having 100% local impact right here. For many of you, you see, you're used to seeing us, you know, we start in September with our campaign, where you raise funds to help support our work during the year, and that's it, then you don't hear from us. Last year, we raised $360,000. That's pretty, pretty great. That's generosity. We're very grateful, but we're evolving, and we raise funds all year round, let's face it. If someone wants to donate or hold an event and give us the proceeds, we're not going to walk away and say, "We only do that in the fall." The needs don't stop. The needs are not seasonal, the needs are every day. You know, you recognize us for our frontline work, the funding that we provide to our partners that deal with the individuals, but what I'm here to talk about today is what, the type of work that we're doing, and it's much, much deeper than what you see on the surface, which is the fundraising. As your United Way, we have five strategies that we really focus on now, and that is research, convening, advocacy, fundraising, and investing, and they're all focused on producing real results that we can see. We leverage them all to address a variety of needs. Our focus areas include programs that improve access to health-related services, meeting basic human needs, and helping people break free from poverty. Also, improving access to early childhood learning, after-school physical activity, and literacy development programs that help to keep kids engaged. Research helps us understand the diverse challenges that are facing our community, and we leverage the data and analysis to make better informed decisions as to the issues we need to address and how do we tackle them. Right now, and this is quite exciting, we're in the final stages of releasing a vulnerable seniors report for the county of Renfrew and the city of Pembroke, specific to our needs. And right now, we're in the final stages, we've come up with a draft. So what I'm doing is I'm reaching out to anyone who works with seniors, so that could be your own social service department, different groups through the county, and I've sent out emails this week, and I'm continuing to reach out to people that would like to have a look at this draft report, because prior to us finalizing it, we want to talk to the boots on the ground, the people that actually know the needs, and see if there's anything missing in our report. Put a local flair on it, because let's face it, someone who lives in the city of Pembroke, their needs are much different than a senior that's isolated outside Berry's Bay or something like that. So that's why we are reaching out to local groups to give us input. So if you have someone that I haven't contacted already that would like to participate in reviewing this draft, I appreciate you contacting me. So that's exciting news. There will be a meeting held in April to go through all of your recommendations towards the report, and then we will be sharing it with your social service departments, because in the next 15 years, the increase in seniors that are going to relocate back to the county is staggering, and will be, all that information will be in this report. Planning together, using a shared foundation such as this research and the evidence that provides, will ensure that all of us around this table and other tables like this will be better prepared in the future when it comes to budgeting and providing the services that we all want to provide in order to make it a great place to live. None of us here in this room are immune to issues like depression, grief, loss, anxiety, and whether you're suffering from those things, or it's your friends, your neighbors, your loved ones, it affects us all. Life can change in the blink of an eye, and many of us in this room are lucky to have the supports, but what if you don't have those supports? Well, you know what? United Way and donors are there to support those needs. My ask of you today is if you haven't already made a personal donation, we've distributed some pamphlets, our campaign is still open until March 31st, so could please consider supporting us? If you're hosting an event, please consider United Way as the benefactor of those proceeds. So remember, last word, United Way is working alongside with each one of you, and every dollar that we invest is a dollar saved in your budget, so please consider partnering with us in the future, and I, it's a pleasure, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pat, and yes, I echo your remarks, please, if you haven't already made a personal donation, please do so before the end of their campaign. So at this time, I'm just going to take a moment here. Ms. Jackie Agnew is with us. She is a councillor in the township of Bonnershire Valley, and very recently, due to personal and her recognizing issues that we're seeing around the county where there are resources that are greatly needed, Jackie took it upon herself to start a mental health task force right here in the county, and she's here today to present her findings and what they've done so far, and this is certainly just the beginning, not the end, but it is my privilege to welcome my colleague and my friend, Jackie Agnew.
Thank you, Jennifer, and thank you, everyone, for having me today. A year ago, I'll be talking about my story later on in the presentation, but my family was hit by mental health, and it turned us inside out and upside down. And the lack of services in the county of Renfrew is what drove me to start the Mental Health Task Force. As some of you know, I'm a councillor in the township of Bonnershire Valley. I also work as a program coordinator for housing and homelessness for Renfrew County Housing Corporation. I see the mental health issues daily at my job and through my township. People, since we've done a video with Mike Barber, have been sending me their emails and letters and phone calls, and I've just been overwhelmed by it all. I can't believe the stories that I've heard and that people want to share with me. But anyhow, so I've started a task force called Let's End the Mental Health Crisis, the Renfrew County Cares Task Force. CARE stands for Community, Access, Resources, Education, and Safety. And some of you may know these facts, but I think they're important, and we need to go over them. 102,394 people live in the county of Renfrew. One in five people suffer from some type of mental illness. That's 20,478 people who need mental health services in the county of Renfrew. Suicide is the leading cause of death among 16- to 25-year-olds, second only to accidents. By age 40, 50% of all Canadians will have suffered some sort of mental illness. There are presently only two psychiatrists in the county of Renfrew, and one is on sabbatical. To get medications and prescriptions, you need a psychiatrist. Note. Mental illness in Ontario is 1.5 times higher than all the cancers put together and seven times higher than all infectious diseases. The county of Renfrew has doubled the mental illness hospitalization rate of Ontario, 750 versus 442 per 100,000 people. The county of Renfrew needs Bell Let's Act, not Bell Let's Talk. If you have a broken arm, you can go to the hospital and have it set. If you have a toothache, you go to the dentist. If you've got an undiagnosed mental illness, you could have a six-to-18-month wait to see a councillor, unless you're lucky enough to have a workplace plan or an EAP. A person who has a heart attack can go to the hospital and have stints put in or bypass surgery, but just this week, I heard the story of a young girl who friends took to the hospital because she told them that she wanted to kill herself. They sent her home because she hadn't attempted suicide. That night, she died by suicide, and her family is burying her this week. They didn't admit her to the mental health floor, they didn't call a councillor in to talk to her, they didn't have a support person who could see her right away, they sent her home in distress. Did she go home and attempt so she could receive treatment? That's something we'll never know, because she's not here any longer. So my story. Imagine you just got home from a fantastic vacation in Cuba. Your husband, who's a singer-songwriter, has a chart, has a song on the country music charts that's the number-one YouTube download and iMusic download that week, and you feel like your life couldn't be better. You're enjoying your first grandchild, and then two weeks later, your life will be tossed upside down and turned inside out, when the person that you love the most loses their battle with depression and attempts suicide. Hospital staff will tell you that he may not make the helicopter trip to Ottawa, but he does, and we end up in the ICU for 12 days, having five dialysis treatments because his liver and kidneys are shutting down. While at the General Hospital in Ottawa, the care is fantastic, the mental health team is amazing, but unfortunately, there are no beds, so he's sent to the Mofo Hospital. When we arrive, we are seen by a psychiatrist who hears my story and my husband's story, and assures us that we will get, he will get great care, and that the family will also receive counselling. None of this happens for two weeks, 14 days. My husband sits in a room by himself all day, with only four nurses for a whole floor, the care is limited. The psychiatrist sees him twice a week for 15 minutes, and no family meetings ever happened. I tell the nursing staff that I need at least a day's notice when he's being released to arrange my schedule to pick him up, as we are an hour and a half away. Two days later, I'm at work, and it's 10:00 in the morning, and my phone rings, and it's my husband. He's being released right away, they need the bed. I talk to my manager, and she says, "Don't worry about anything, go and pick up, go and pick up your husband and take care of your family." I head to Ottawa, and I pull up to the Mofo Hospital, and there's my husband standing outside with his suitcase. They released him before I arrived, not knowing if I had arranged a ride for him or not. He was released with no care plan, without a family meeting, and with no supports. I called Jennifer Murphy, who's one of my best friends, and had a good cry and told her that I'll wait a week to see if anything happens. Nothing happened. We received no call from the hospital to see how he was doing. We received no call from the Pembroke Hospital, no call from the mental health system, no call from anyone. I was at home with a husband who had just recently attempted suicide and said that he still wanted to die, and I had nothing, and I didn't know what to do. So I called Jen Murphy again a week later, who called Peter Emo, and within two days, Steve got the services that he needed, and luckily enough, he's in a better place today. He started, it's a year later, he started his own contracting company, which is successful, he's doing very well. We're happy, but I know that this is a bad time of year, and I'm just waiting to see if it'll happen again. I live on eggshells daily, wondering what's going to happen. To this day, our family still has not received any family counselling to deal with this. I've got counselling through our EAP system, and our kids can call and get counselling through EAP, but we haven't had no family sessions, not one. If my husband would have had a heart attack or cancer, none of this would have happened. He would have been taken care of and gotten the care that he needed, but with mental illness, patients are sent home daily without care or follow-up. Today, he's doing very well, but I've heard so many stories, and that's what made me want to start this Mental Health Task Force. The county of Renfrew is in a crisis. We need Mental Health Task Force to look at how mental health services are delivered in the county of Renfrew. We don't just need more psychiatrists, we need to look at how services can be integrated more efficiently within the broader mental health care system to provide better access to care for our residents. Unless we make changes in how services are delivered, our client's ability to access services will not improve, our resident's ability will not improve, and the demand for service will keep outpacing the supply. My belief is that a Mental Health Task Force can look at the demand versus supply of our mental health services, to look at mental health recruitment, and to develop a plan for the county of Renfrew. Since my video aired with Michael Barber back in November, I have received over 200 emails, Facebook messages, and phone calls from Renfrew County residents. The video itself has had over 4,300 views. People from Ottawa, Lannar County, and Renfrew County have called to see if this task force can be Ottawa Valley-wide. We are also looking, we're looking into psychiatrist recruitment, so we'll have another person who can prescribe meds. Our task force is looking into organizing a mental health support group, much like AA, which many of the letters that I've received have been about this, that if there could be a support group, so when someone goes to the hospital rather than being sent home, they can make a call and have someone, much like the vicar's team, the victim services team, only a mental health person come and speak to them and talk to them, and not just send them home without any care. They'll at least have someone to talk to. We would like to organize a group of volunteers, like I said, like victim services, who can show up and talk to patients. We've met with Greg from the Phoenix Center, who came to talk to us about moving on mental health, and we discussed which areas each group should focus on. We would also like to focus on a portable mental health community, something like the toy bus that could travel around Renfrew County along the Highway 60 corridor and offer services to the residents of Renfrew County who can't get into Pembroke, Armpryor, or Renfrew. We've reached out to the Lynn, and we're hoping to hear back shortly from them. We're filling out grant applications with Bell Let's Talk and the United Way, so hopefully we can hear from them as well. One thing about the Mental Health Task Force is that we are made up of teachers, firefighters, ministers, there's myself, a councillor and social services employee. We have two school support councillors, we have the Robbie Dean Centre at the table, we have some mental health survivors at the table, we have a physician from Pembroke who sits at the table, we have an OPP officer who sits at the table, and they are all very involved with what's happening and want to see a change being made. When Greg came to speak to our Mental Health Task Force about the Move On Mental Health movement, only one person at the table have heard about it, and they've been talking for three years now, so we need to get that word out there, and we need to move a lot faster, not just sit around a table and talk. We have many different mental health agencies looking for funding and vying for funds from the same funding source, but just imagine if you could help the residents in your municipalities who aren't covered by health insurance plans. By committing $1 per resident per year, for example, Bonnershire Valley, $3,500, you can make a difference. Imagine if every municipality had access to mental health services in their own community, much like the doctor recruitment services that we set up years ago. The funding from this could go to set up a traveling mental health unit along the Highway 60 corridor, much like the toy bus, but only for mental health. This is the same funding formula that was used for the physician recruitment. We would also like municipal representation on the task force. Together, we can change the face of mental health in Renfrew County and lead the change for the province. We are able to run under the umbrella of the Robbie Dean Centre, and we would like to meet with victim services to talk about their model of service as well. We need your help, we need letters of support from your councils. We would love to have municipal representation on the task force. This is happening in your communities, and we need to end it now. Thank you for your time and for listening to me today.
Is there any questions? Yes?
Counselor Robinson?
Thank you, Lord. Uh, Jackie, thank you for making the presentation and, uh, sharing your disturbing stories. I'm wondering if, um, you and the task force have considered making these presentations to the individual municipalities in town because I could never do justice to your presentation today by taking into Redcham Valley. So, um, if you're interested in doing that, I certainly, my perspective, I would ask my council to, uh, entertain having you come to other council meetings.
I would love to do that and if you can pass the word on to the counselors who aren't here, I'm more than happy to visit each of your municipalities.
Certainly can do that. Counselor Stack?
Thank you very much for your presentation. I wonder if you could come through this, some of those stats are, are interesting and obviously contacts because again, I think it's, it needs to come from the local tiers and, and make that impression.
Thank you. Counselor Doherty?
Thank you, Madam Ordin, and through you, uh, thank you very much, um, to Jackie. That was, uh, first off, I, I'm moved by and applaud, uh, your efforts. Um, it's not everybody in the community where they see these issues and takes such a leadership role, um, to, to, to begin to track address. I am vaguely aware also, we from having sat on, uh, some of the, um, LIN sub-region presentations, that one of the outlined, uh, statistics in the Western Champlain, which is somewhat larger than Renfrew County alone, uh, but we have a stat of 60% higher than the Champlain, uh, overall in suicides and self-harm. So, uh, it's not just that the resources aren't there, but the impact of not having the resources are playing right in front of us. So like, um, Counselor Robinson, very much appreciate it and, uh, if I have your contact information through the task force, um, direct my, uh, my staff to, to invite you to a future meeting. I think this is something I agree with, without, without getting into a particular trade name, I think, um, that, that the, the time for talk, uh, while talk certainly, it can still be, I think the time for talk is, is rapidly passed by us. And now no longer we have to admit and accept to that mental health is the same as any other health, but now we must begin to resource it to be able to address mental health the same as we address every other health. To avoid that, we can perhaps stop even referring to it as mental health. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anything further?
Well, um, as, as you heard, I was very much involved in, in what Jackie and her family went through and, uh, Counselor Emo isn't here today, but I, I do thank him so profusely for, um, for dealing with this so quickly and efficiently for the Agnew family. Um, and Jackie, you know, I think it's so brave of you to be able to stand here, um, not quite a year later and be able to tell such a personal and, at, at the time, tragic story. And, um, you know, you know how much I love you and I love Steve, um, and I, I thank God that he's still with us. So thank you so much for your presentation and I think everybody will want, you're gonna be a busy one. I think, I think you're gonna have to, to go to most of the municipalities and present us, 'cause I do agree with Counselor Robinson, I don't think any of us could do this presentation justice the way you did. So thank you.
Thank you. And I'd just like to say that, um, without the support of the county of Renfrew as an employee, I couldn't have helped my husband on this journey. And for the support they gave me for being able to take time off work and just being told, you know, "Go take care of your family," not a lot of people have that. And I think, I'm thankful every day that I have the position that I have and that I work for an organization that puts families first. Thank you very much.
I think just for a moment here, um, Paul isn't here, but I thank Paul and his team. Thank you to them, but, and also to Bruce. Obviously, this EAP, um, program that Bruce brought forward for us is a very important resource in the county of Renfrew for our employees and their families. So good work. Uh, this time, I'm going to call on Mr. Hutton to introduce our next delegation, which is not David Weibu.
Thanks very much, Lord. Members of County Council, Alistair Baird, come on forward, please, Alistair. Our next, uh, delegation is on the updated economic development strategy that the Development and Property Committee is working on and was presented to Development and Property Committee, um, this month, that committee, David Weibu, whose daughter is ill, so Alistair Pinchetti, I'm sure he's ill too, just as well. Um, in terms of the economic development strategy itself, we've had a strategy in the county of Renfrew for a number of years now. And you may recall that our strategic plan has seven priorities. One of them is an economic development summit. And we had that summit in Eatonville in last July.
June, two?
June, June.
Yeah, it wasn't quite summer.
Yeah, very well-intended, excellent summit. We've had a couple of them that was a very good one, thanks to Craig and Stafford and Alistair for putting that on. And the summit formed the basis for the update of this economic development strategy, which I think is an excellent document. And I just want to finish by saying that the first, our first strategic plan in the county of Renfrew was called 2014 Priorities, 2014 to 2018 Priorities. It's due to be updated in 2019 and this, of course, will form prior to that. So, Alistair, if you could leave us here, thanks very much. I'm sure your council may have some questions.
Thanks, Cao, Council. Good morning. So I do want to stress right up front and as, as the CAO alluded to, David Weibu, my colleague, our business development officer here in the county, he did all the work on this document and he, we're, unfortunately, he couldn't be here today. So our, our count, our county of Renfrew and what we are and who we are, and so our cover page of our, our document and as you saw earlier, the material, the booth, the display we take when we travel around the county, but mostly outside the county, this is what we show that, that is us. It's, it's, and it's a lot of things and it's a lot of really exciting things and it's a lot of really unique things. Um, we are a really, uh, special and spectacular and unusual place. We've got a lot going on. So again, who we are and what we are and what we have to offer other people. So our residents, but also of course, people from away. Uh, we use this in an Ottawa business journal, they create it for us and so we're using it. So our, these are our strengths really. This is, this is the attractiveness, the strengths we have for people, individuals, businesses, and investment. Our proximity to markets, uh, many businesses that are on the leading edge, affordable, uh, commercial land, affordable, that also equates to buildings and, uh, and industrial land. Connectivity and of course, the elected here led, led this and continue to lead on communications and connectivity, our workforce, business-friendly government officials. So that's, that's our, our team here. It is important, when you speak to investors and they talk about Ottawa versus us, we look pretty good. So the ACTF Summit that, that the CAO alluded to, Larry Smith, some Craig's old friend, Larry, was a really interesting, engaging speaker. Many of you were there and you can see the audience and you may recognize some representing a big manufacturing company. Um, a few young people were there, uh, many citizens, business people. So it was a very engaging, uh, a very good day. So our citizens at large, interest groups, business leaders from commercial and industrial, elected leaders, and at, right down to municipal counselors as well, and the media and education. We came out of that with, with six key priorities. So we, we have many of these in similar wording in our existing strategy, but this was our chance to stop, step back, have a look at where we're, where the, what's the world doing? What's the county doing? Where, where's our place in it? Where do we want to be in it? So it's been updated a lot, but you will recognize many of these. Business retention, expansion, really, I would, I would always add, investment attraction is part of that. And you see our tourism investment and that's investment attraction and development of new tourism product. A work-to-live environment. People have flexibility now. If you want to keep people here, they have to have work that they enjoy and find challenging and make a good living and they have, but they want an environment in which they like to live. And that plays for outsiders as well. I just met with an immigration group, uh, they, they help people land in Canada and find positions. So the key thing they always want is an investment they can make or a job they can go to. Everything else comes after that. And so our, our work, work-to-live environment that we want to make sure is emphasized and continues to improve is pretty important. Transportation infrastructure, again, another elected-led, uh, push here has been for, for decades and will continue and it's this council that really leads on a lot of that. This is, this is plugged in here. It's not, it's pretty difficult to see, it's in the document, but one of the, perhaps a, a couple of highlights here before we talk about where we're focusing, the, uh, the bigger the ball is, the sphere and the further to your right, that essentially measures income blended with numbers of employees. And just the, uh, to head like, the big purple ball is public administration. Now that, that includes military in our case here and a lot of us and a lot of the other services. Uh, manufacturing is this red ball close below it. Way over on the right, that other purple ball, FUSIA, uh, that is professional services and that reflects to a great extent the nuclear labs. Um, the black one is retail and the white ball, the way over on the left, um, that is our accommodation and hospitality, food services. So you can see significant, but it's also down at this end of the scale, lower wages paid in that sector. So it's a very interesting slide to look at. And our agriculture has very low incomes down here, the little green ball, because there aren't that many people working in it, but it has a high level of sales of farm receipts. So this slide doesn't tell us everything, but it's a really engaging slide. And you'll see it in the finished document. So we come out of that with our, with our, our focus areas really. Advanced manu-, it's manufacturing, advanced manufacturing. We make a surprising amount of, of goods here in the county and it's surprising to many people. And our manufacturers have, through a lot of turmoil, uh, in a high cost of production Nick, province and nation, have done a remarkable job of growing their, retaining their businesses here and growing them. Nuclear science research and development, we have a really unique cluster up in Laurentian Hills at Chalk River Labs, uh, Canadian Nuclear Laboratories. And, and while that's very nuclear science oriented, they do a lot of research in all fields, in materials, in physics, and now in hydrogen for advanced fuels, biology, environment, health physics. And we have other research activities and development of new technology going on as well, outside those labs and some of it not directly related. So forestry and forestry is forestry and value-added wood processing. So we, we grow trees, we harvest them, we process them into lumber, we process them into, uh, medium-density fiber board, we process them into one of the world's leading bio-oils in Renfrew at, at Ensign Technologies. So forestry, it has always been at the heart of, of our county and it continues to be a very important player. We in the county are in the business. We own 54 forests. You, you, you manage, you help us manage 54 forests ourselves and harvesting them in a sustainable manner is a, is a big activity for us in development property. Farms, so you can see over time, the, the declining number of farms. And that's consolid-, it's not a, not always bad. That's consolidation, rationalization. Uh, farmers, farms are getting bigger, but the acres still being farmed and the crops and the livestock raised and produced and sold are, are still there. It's pretty, pretty, I'm looking to our two farm business people here, it's pretty stable and it reflects really the trend globally on, on farm consolidation. And again, it's, it's a vital, uh, year-over-year major contributor to our economy. Tourism investment and development and attraction. So, so we, we in the, in the county with the Ottawa Valley Tourist Association, we do the marketing, promotion, sales job for our tourism sector. It's all our businesses and attractions, it's our towns and cities and our, our natural resources, we try and attract people here to use them. So we have lots of good pictures. We have four-season activities and, uh, and it's a, it's a big part supported by the, you and the, the county council supporting tourism. The investment side of it is attracting in, uh, dollars, money, new participants in the industry to take over businesses as owners retire, to expand them or grow them. And, uh, that happens naturally, but it really does need, um, engagement by us and it's an area we, we pay some attention to in economic development already and will continue to is to try and find those new owners and operators of our tourism, hospitality, Communications. Uh, we exist really in economic development and this strategy supports it. We, our role is to communicate to the world the county of Renfrew and all that we have to offer. And so we'll be, we will continue to use, uh, all the media, uh, vehicles and channels and growing in the social media and, uh, global marketing that way and outreach. We still go to trade shows, we still go and meet people face-to-face, uh, they come and see us, we go and see them if it's worth the, worth the investment to make sure they know about us and can make an informed decision about coming up to the county of Renfrew. We collab-, economic development is led by Craig, there's myself, David Weibu, and Jackie. So for the whole county, three of us. Now many of our towns and city, our city of Pembroke have, uh, economic development and community business development staff. So we collaborate closely with our partners in the area. We collaborate with our provincial, uh, representatives, federal representatives, other organizations, chambers of commerce, industry and business associations. We'll be doing that for a while, we'll continue to do that. We reach out to the industry sectors themselves and their participants to make sure all their members realize and recognize who we are, what we are, and what we have up here. So, uh, Dave inserted this, he went to a session and inserted it. It's, uh, about disruptive technologies. Kind of a buzzword right now. Uh, really, it's just change. And so the best example over time is, is from men and horses, uh, using levers to, uh, to harvesters. You saw one of our first pictures was a, a harvester in a forest. Uh, the operator's in a safe, air-conditioned cab with his music going and, uh, he's harvesting the, the forest and preparing the logs for, for processing. So things are coming along. A cellphone was disruptive, um, but autonomous vehicles. Um, you know, vehicles have gotten more, more fuel-efficient over the decades and, which is a good thing, but what's that done to our economy? We have many fewer gas stations because vehicles go further between required fill-ups, even though we're driving more miles per person. AI, artificial intelligence. We talked a little bit about rationalization, manufacturing, agriculture, forestry, less people working, still a similar level or higher levels of output. And, uh, automation and intelligent machines are, are, have started that already. It will only continue. Smart homes and smart cities, that's connectivity really largely. And we, we in the county are, again, thanks to leadership of this chamber, uh, very involved in that. So we want to keep going there. Online shopping, which takes advantage of these tech, some technologies, of course, is disruptive because many, many fewer people shop in retail sites now and that trend will only continue glob-, it is global. So all these things we have to think about, be aware of, and try and address and react to. Our strategy, living document, uh, as our previous one, updated and amended as, as we learn new things or, uh, uh, new developments occur, uh, and as we get input from other people. And thanks, and, yeah, ourselves in economic development. And that's, that's, uh, Chair, uh, that's our economic development strategy in a brief presentation to you, just to orient you to it.
Thank you, Alistair. Are there any questions for Alistair? Counselor Doherty?
Uh, thank you very much, uh, through you, Madam Chair, to, uh, to Mr. Baird, uh, very illuminating discussion. Is there going to be a document come forward that is a, a concise strategy? Uh, I'm very much interested, that's part one, part two even, if that would be available in PDF, simply the series are very small, but I think, uh, some of the information can be made here as well.
Yes, thanks, Chair, through Chair. So yes, the, the strategy, Development and Property Committee have it for review and we'll, we'll have their response, uh, probably prior our next meeting and I'm gonna look to my director here. So absolutely, for council, Craig, any, is there a specific rollout yet? Craig, any, is there a specific rollout yet?
I, with the Chair, let me see something.
My colleague, it's contained in the, in the package that you have, that the entire document itself, okay? If there's anything else that you need beyond that, we'll be pleased to, to make sure that it's available. But it is contained in our, in our package.
Thank you. Anything further? Counselor Peket.
Thank you, Warden. Alastair, this is a regular question from me in the CDS presentations. Is there any ongoing work about expanding high-speed internet throughout the county or is that finished? Because I must tell you that the area of Burnside is extremely poorly serviced, including our township, including students, including home basement businesses, including our CAO, including our couple of counselors who do not or cannot get high-speed internet of a reliable source. So my question is, is there any work being done or is to improve that? Or is everybody just going to say 95% is good enough?
I'll take this one if you want. Since I've been involved in it for a good year and a bit. So it is the priority, the single priority of the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus. With the partnership of the Eastern Ontario Regional Network, the lobbying has gone far and wide. One of the things that we have said is, yes, we don't want to be part of the 5% that the CRTC is saying is acceptable. I will tell you, as recently as Monday, members of the EORN and the EOWC Chair went and met with interim leader Fidelli and a couple of his caucus. It was during the questioning period, but they wanted to take advantage of, of the OGR Conference to, to speak to the interim leader. I will tell you when a, when a new leader of PC party is installed, we will be taking another trip to Toronto to, to speak to that person, I'm not going to say her, that person and their caucus, just in case it changes. The other thing we will be doing, because we've integrated a public safety broadband network within the project of the broadband and cell gap project. So the $213 million project went to a $299 million project to include this PSBN. What that does though is save us about $47 million. When the, when we go to Toronto to meet with the new leader of PCs, we are also, I don't know if everyone heard, two days ago, or yesterday, Dr. Hoskins resigned as the Minister of Health. So now Minister Jassik, who we had the opportunity to meet when she was here in Pembroke with Councilor Robinson, we will be meeting with her as the new Minister of Health. The reason for that is because of some of the changes to the Land Ambulance Act and the advancements therein. Dr. Hoskins was very interested in this public safety broadband network. And so we want to take advantage of this time and make sure that the new minister understands that as well. I will tell you that last year, we did take, we did have three priorities as the EOWC. Because of some fairly fast regu-, legislation that came down, we did have to pivot quite a bit. We didn't lose our message of how important the EORN project is. But this year, we decided that this was going to be our single project. And if we got 20 minutes with the government, we were going to spend 20 minutes talking about this, this cell and broadband problem. The letter was sent to the Premier of Ontario because she was in the meeting. And she did respond that it obviously is an excellent project, it's shovel-ready and quite frankly, could be a model for not only the rest of Ontario, but all over Canada. So obviously, right now, we're in a very tenuous situation with the PC party not even having a new leader yet and the election in June coming. But we will continue to lobby on behalf of all of Eastern Ontario. But definitely, I've told my stories about Renfrew County. Not only, I don't have cellphone service, as the press knows, at my house. But I also, in order to have high-speed internet, it costs me about $400 a month for the Rogers hub. So, you know, those are challenges that it's, it's in a way, not that I don't want to have those services, but it's easier for me to go to these meetings and say, you know, when I lived in Toronto in 1999, I had, I had high-speed internet and a cellphone in 1993. It's 2018 now and I don't have either service at my house in rural Canada, which I think is unacceptable. So I hope that answers your question. supplementary?
No, Warden, I just wanted to thank you for the information. And it gives me some hope for, for community that folks are still working on. Appreciate your efforts, thank you.
Thank you. It's, it's been quite the feat. Counselor Shlie.
Yeah, thank you very much, Warden. Yeah, it's appreciated that somebody's at the table, particularly at the EORN, because anything at the EORN is everything below high number seven in terms of representation. So I think it's important that, that through the E or W C and our friend Jim Hutton, that we make sure that Renfrew County is not forgotten. It's not just down at Pittman, Burnside, I can tell you, the largest community between Ottawa and North Bay. You cannot get cellphone coverage in the town of Pedawala. You can't get high-speed in the town of Pedawala that's satisfactory to what you're talking about, that's satisfactory to the, the federal government. And so it's not just a localized rural thing, very much a small urban thing as well. And I get complaints constantly. You can drive down Doran Road in, in Pedawala before you hit the highway, you don't have any cellphone coverage. That's unacceptable, as you say, in the year 2018. I believe my friend Jim, Jim Pine and Lisa Saverson are coming up to talk to us. And I would suggest that we strongly, strongly talk to them about the lack of those services and, and really, really press the, the case forward that we need the same type of thing that they get in Peterborough, that they get in Kingston, that they get along the 401. And not to forget about Renfrew County. We had to fight for all of these, what do you call it? Anyway, we had to fight to get the, the type of level that we need when they put the broadband ring in, in, in Eastern Ontario.
Thank you for that. I should have also, oh, maybe Jim's going to touch on this, I should have. It is one of the reasons that I actually ran for Vice Chair, because I wanted to make sure that I was front and center at all of these meetings, letting them know that the needs of Renfrew County are vast. And we, we had the discussion, it's extremely unacceptable to me to be driving on a provincial highway such as Highway 41. And for approximately an hour and a half, there is absolutely no service. One of the things that we have been talking about though is that it's not only the lack of service, it's the lack of capacity. Because people, Alastair touched on this, smart homes. My, my brother actually designs them. You need 150 up, 10 down to rent most homes properly. Your refrigerator, your lighting, your heating, everything runs off your internet. I don't see us getting that anytime soon. But one of the arguments that was recently made with the government and with both caucuses was that the province of Quebec is investing a billion dollars. They are going, they are exceeding what the CRTC is asking of them. Instead of going 50 up, 10 down, they're actually talking about 100 up, 25 down, which is quite an amazing speed. The other challenge that we have is that we're so close to the American border, the, the United States is also making huge investments in their broadband and cell gap. So obviously, the fear is that this makes us completely non-competitive in our area. That was of great interest to the government and to both caucuses. And I assume everybody knows that the funding model we're looking at over four years is $94.2 million from each of the federal, provincial and the telcos. And then 14.2 million will come from those of us in Eastern Ontario. So we are, we are looking for a definitive answer from each of those governments. It, it's just, it's at that very tenuous time right now with the elections and, and sort of some uncertainty. I will tell you that our MPP is fully on board to lobby on our behalf as well. And the, the meetings have gone well. And I will come back with a report after the leadership and convention, when we have a meeting with not only the new PC caucus, but also with Minister Jassik. Did that, oh, Jim, I'm sorry.
That's fine, Madam Warden, thank you. Just through to you, counsel, I wanted to confirm that Jim Pine and Lisa Saverson of EORN are coming April, Council, Council meeting to talk about the mobile broadband network and the public safety broadcast network. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Thank you, Alastair. Mr. Hutton, is there any correspondence?
Thank you, Madam Warden. Correspondence has been forwarded to the committee.
Thank you. Does anybody need a five-minute break? Because we're very low and poor up here, so, yeah, yeah, I'm getting along with that. Okay. Welcome back. We'll get started with our first committee report for operations, taken away, Counselor Peket.
Thank you, Warden. As for council's information, everyone was given a denton, so there'll be an item number call at the end, end of my report and this, this goes. So members of county council, we, your operation committee wish to report and recommend as follows. Under information, there is a notice that was tabled from Ottawa Bob Scherelli in regards to clean water wastewater fund. It's been extended to March 31st, 2020, deadline March 31st, 2017. Addition requirements for 60% of funds be expended prior to March 31st, 2020. Eliminated, I think that's good news for our response. Item two, operations committee. Usually at this, over the past years, we've had meetings at different municipalities throughout the county. And last year, due to unforeseen circumstances, we weren't able to do that. But in 2018, the plan is to have the May 20th, the operations committee meeting at the township of Greater Madawaska and the June 2018 meeting at the township of White Water Region. Item three, monthly project status report, is tabled as a monthly report. This, the program is just, for this year is just starting and, and there'll be a lot more information coming forward as, as the tenders go out and are received back to the community. Item four, Ministry of Transportation initiatives. Our, our director attended, Steve Holden, attended a meeting in Kingston with the Ministry of Transport to order the following initiatives being proposed by MTO. Part A, the joint procurement opportunities. Ministry is wanting, are willing to partner with municipalities who have similar construction or road building going on in an area that they are going to work on. And to work with, with the different municipalities, perhaps enabling municipalities to get better pricing. You would be required to abide by the terms of the MTO contract. And B, Ontario 511 system. This has been in use for approximately 10 years. The Ministry of, Ministry of Transportation had this Ontario 511 for no charge. They're, they're going to launch a new updated system and seeking comments from the users. The Ontario 511 application, county access, the link that's given there. During the spring floods in 2017, the county convinced using a similar municipal 511 system in a way to provide for old users of closures and other matters regarding the status of road lease. They're going, the public works and engineer will be expanding the use of municipal 511 to provide information in the 2018 encouraged construction programs and associated constructions. It's important, it's available at the website listed there and the coordination of various information sites for the advanced coverage will be provided. The AORs trade show, it's an annual municipal public works trade show hosted by the Association of Ontario Road Supervisors. This is where they get together, it's going to be in Velvile this year on June 6th and 7th, is where they get together to share information on technical developments and materials and services and equipment prepared to build and maintain municipal roads and other core infrastructure. There's a website there to hook onto for more information. And local Renfrew County Road Supervisors Association considering reaching bus transportation if, if there's a need and sufficient interest existing. And six, a bridge naming request, there was a matter received from Mr. Blockton requesting a bridge in White Lake. Named in honor of his great-great-grandfather, John Paris. After some discussion, the committee decided to maintain the current informal process of moving bridges rather than developing policy. Item seven, winter operations. You can see the table there showing the amounts of precipitation and historical data. Resolution, under item eight, rehabilitation founder wrote, resolution number OPCC 180207, moved by chair, seconded by committee, that the county of Renfrew not partner with the city of Pembroke and the township of Laurentian Valley in the financing of the rehabilitation of bonded roads. Background there, provided there for the reasoning for the committee's decision. As read, the Burton and Parry attendants, given that the section of bonded road being considered for rehabilitation is located entirely within its city limits. And in view of the fact that there is no longer any agreement for the sharing of costs of roads and provide maintenance to road users, on a regional basis, the operation committee recommends that the county not enter into a partnership with the city for this project. Item nine, municipal class environment assessment reform, resolution number OPCCC 180208, moved by chair, seconded by committee, the county council passed the full resolution. Now, Warden, there are seven, whereas if you really want me to skip over those, I'll go to the, to the punchline. Therefore, do resolve that the county of Renfrew requests that Minister of Environment and Climate Change take immediate steps to expedite the response process for part two orders, or pump-up requests as part of the S61 review to improve MCEA process times and reduce study costs. And further that the Ministry of Environment and Climate Change support change to better and better harmonize the MCEA process, the process defined under the PINE Act. And further that the Ministry of Environment and Climate Change amend the scope of MCEA reports and studies to reduce duplication with existing public processes and decisions made under municipal official plans and provincial legislation. Background is, is there for your information. Just to point out of, of some of the dangers by, by not speeding up the processes such as larger projects, County Road 51 Pedawal-Holberg, as scheduled, C I T, where it can follow much more rigorous environmental assessment plan, indicating resolution to provide a it follows much more rigorous environmental assessment plan, indicating resolution provided by over delays may mean that municipal should lose funding opportunities, such as the next intake of delcan and both. Item ten, contract PWO twenty sixteen oh one, supply and delivery of winter salt, extension. Resolution number OPC C eighteen oh two thirteen, moved by chair, second by committee, that the extension of contract PWO twenty sixteen oh one for supply and delivery of winter salt at the rate of ninety-five dollars and sixty-one cents per ton for the twenty eighteen and nineteen, and ninety-seven dollars and forty-five cents per ton for the twenty nineteen and twenty winters, twenty winters seasons to be approved. Background is listed there as to why that the staff are recommending this, and they found that extensions of existing contracts usually lead to better pricing than going up to the tender. Bylaw number eleven, transfer to jurisdiction for county structure CO twenty-eight, Alice Overforce Municipal Rain Cover, and county structure C one thirty-three Shield Drive Cover. Resolution number OPC C eighteen oh two ten, moved by chair, second by committee, the council, county council passed a bylaw to amend the schedule via bylaws ten dash fifteen to remove the county structure CO twenty-eight, the Alice Overforce Municipal Rain Cover, from the county road system and transfer this structure to the township of Orange Valley, where it is situated, and to remove county structure C one thirty-three Shield Drive Cover from the county road system and transfer this structure to the township of McNab, where it is situated. The background is there, and basically that the, these two structures no longer meet the criteria to be covered by the county. The dentum that is there, item number twelve, county structure B one one zero, Captain Christopher Bell Bridge, resolution number OPC C eighteen oh two sixteen, moved by chair, second by committee, the county council approved the rehabilitation of county structure B one one zero, Captain Christopher Bell Bridge, using option three, overlay, waterproof, and pave up to the current lane, at the estimated construction cost of one billion seven hundred three thousand six hundred fifty-three dollars, with the additional funding of approximately five hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be directed from the TCA renewal reserve. Background is, is there for your information. The county road forty-five, Russell Drive, transfer of road by the resolution number OPC eighteen oh two eleven, moved by chair, second by committee, county council passed bylaws, second transfer of block forty-one, Plan forty-nine M dash thirty-four, from one six zero five eight two monetary loan to the county renter, and that block forty-one, Plan forty-nine M dash ninety-four, dedicated as part of the highway upon registration of the transferred documents. Background is there. County road forty-five, Russell Drive, transfer of land, one foot reserve, resolution number OPC C eighteen oh three twelve, moved by chair, second by committee, the county also passed a bylaw, second transfer of block forty-two, Plan forty-nine M dash ninety-four, from one six zero five eight two monetary loan to the county renter, as a one foot reserve. Background is there for your information. All questions will be respectfully submitted ourselves to chair committee members, King, Murray, Love, and Katie Miller, Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We'll go back to information. Item number one. Number two. Three, the status report. Four, the Ministry of Transportation. Six, the bridge naming. Seven, winter operations. Moving into resolutions, number eight, Counselor Robinson.
Thank you, Warden. I'm just looking for some clarification, because to my knowledge, the township of Orange Valley didn't ask the county to be a partner with bonded roads, I'm just wondering if the resolution says the county will not partner, become a partner of the city of Cameron and the township of Orange Valley. I'm not sure why we have that there.
No, I'm intrigued. Mr. Boland?
Thank you, Warden. Through you to counsel. That request was actually contained within Mayor Lemay's letter, that we partner with the township and the city. So we reflected that within the resolution as well.
Counselor Robinson, if you might just follow up, just so that everyone understands that the township of Orange Valley did not ask the county to contribute to bonded road, nor has Orange Valley agreed to contribute to bonded road.
Thank you for that clarification. I think we'll leave the resolution as is, if it's okay with you, and maybe just add that caveat to the minutes, just because you were, your township was invoked in the letter, so, you know, we want to address both, but I think we should reflect that in the minutes, that it was not a request. Thank you. Anything further? And number nine, Counselor Sweet.
Thank you, just for clarity, and so that I understand what is happening on number nine, it says, talks about assessment reform, in particular of County Road fifty-one. A class environmental assessment was done on County Road fifty-one, and there was a request for a bump up, which was denied by the minister, and so the class environmental assessment, in my mind, has been done. Do I read that there's a need to do another assessment of class C assessment as a result of this reform? And if so, why? Or does the existing environmental assessment that was done satisfy the requirements?
Mr. Boland?
Thank you, Warden Murphy. Through you to counsel. Short answer is no, there's no need to reopen that, that whole environmental assessment, as we understand it right now, as long as we continue to move the yardsticks forward a little bit at a time, if necessary, that still stays active. The County Road fifty-one project was simply used as an illustration of some of the things that could happen, and the request of the OGR A in this case is to reduce the amount of effort required in terms of the class environmental assessment, where it makes sense to do so, and avoid the duplication that often falls in with the planning process, the urban planning process, official plan process, things like that, that already take into consideration many of the environmental aspects of a project going forward. So County Road fifty-one was just used as an example for illustrating purposes.
Thank you. Anything further? Number ten, the winter salt. Number eleven, the bylaws. And finally, number twelve, the resolution with respect to Captain Christopher Bell Bridge. Counselor Robinson.
Thank you, Warden. Just my ignorance, I suppose, for this bridge.
It's important, it's where the, the landslides were. Counselor McDonaghy.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Wonder if, perhaps through you, if the director of the treasurer, director of finance could give an indication of the impact it might be on long-term financial planning from the extra half year?
Absolutely. We had lengthy discussion, not only at operations, during committee week, but also this morning, just before we convened, and I think Mr. Foss and Mr. Boland can certainly answer your question. Who wants to start? Mr. Foss?
Thank you, Madam. Madam Warden, members of counsel, I apologize for my voice this morning, I'm just getting a little bit of cold. So our long-term financial plan is discussed at our budget session in the month of January, collects funding, if you will, from a number of reserve accounts, and primarily, our, our chief funding source is the tangible capital asset renewal reserve, which is a new reserve created, as, at the same time as we created our long-term financing strategy. Those reserve accounts currently, as we look toward the ten-year mark of our long-term strategy, result in us essentially maintaining a reserve level, or a capital reserve level, that moves from about mid, the mid twenty-five, twenty million dollar mark to about thirty million dollars at the ten-year mark. And so we're able to maintain that reserve, if you will, while funding the tangible capital needs of the organization over the entire ten-year period. So this five hundred thousand dollars roughly would be taken from that reserve, and would reduce that reserve, that tangible capital asset reserve over that ten-year period by five hundred thousand, plus any sort of accrued interest that might be part of that as well. So we're still left with a, an adequate reserve balance in the TCA renewal reserve over that ten-year stretch, and it does allow us the ability to finance this particular project if year one can still have an adequate reserve for the remainder of the asset renewal strategy over the ten-year period.
Thank you. Mr. Boland? Does that answer your question? Counselor McDonaghy?
Thanks, yes, I, if that answers the question, I am, the terminology of an adequate reserve is of course of paramount interest to me, because I believe that you had suggested also at my budget, that a sum of quarter of a million dollars less than this, and the budget would also have an adequate reserve, so I just wanted to have that in discussion.
Thank you. Anything further? The report as a whole. Can I get a minute, please? Thank you, all those in favor, opposed and standing. Excellent. We'll move on. Chief Development and Property, taken away, Wade, Chair Sweet.
Yeah, thank you. Go take a great big breath, because the two hundred and ten page. So sit back, and you move your ties or whatever.
You can leave it when, Bob.
Yeah. Number six trees.
That's right.
Anyway, members of county council, we, your Development and Property Committee wish to report and recommend as follows. A number of information items. Item number one is the planning and division activity report, which can be found on page thirty-seven, for your information. The item number two is the Ottawa River watershed study. The staff will be responding to the survey and questionnaire with the position that was previously adopted by county council on May the thirty-first. I have to say that I think we've had a wonderful arrangement and relationship with natural resources over the years, and that will continue with this particular situation. We're very concerned that this could be another level of government that is really unnecessary, so staff will be monitoring that on a regular basis. Item number three is an interesting one, is the international plowing match. There were made some overtures to the, to the county for consideration for hosting this in the year twenty twenty-one. The last time this was put in place was in nineteen ninety-four, and it was one of the most successful plowing matches that was ever put in place with the International Plowing Group. So it's an opportunity for, for us to take another look at this and see if it's a viable option. Economic development, as you know, is not always about building chimneys and brick and mortar, it's about bringing people into, into their community, and here's an opportunity to bring approximately sixty-five thousand individuals into, to Redford County, that's what happened in nineteen ninety-four. So they'll be looking at that and making a recommendation, or at least a report back to Development and Property. Item number four is the economic development strategy, it starts on page fifty, Counselor McDonaghy, for your information, and we heard about it from Alston this morning. The transit, transit accommodation tax, you can see there, this is an opportunity, and if we so wanted, destination marketing type of situation, the letter that was received from the minister is on page eighty-eight, and the OBT A is going to be making a report back to, to county council on this particular situation. Funds that are received through this marketing opportunity will be used for tourism opportunities, another rising star within the county of Redford, and it's another tool that was given to us for funding by the province of Ontario. So there's been a number of menus of opportunities, funding, and this is one of them as well. This has been asked by municipalities, and it's an opportunity to take a look at that. Item number six is the Ottawa Valley Tourism Awards, are now open and forward. Item number seven is celebrating women in business, that's page ninety, the flyer for the opportunity, the best western, it's always a greatly attended date for, for all the ladies and women in, in business who will be there, is put on by enterprise Redford County. Summer company applications are now open. Item number nine, the forestry harvest opportunities, that would appear as though we're going to be budget in terms of harvesting for this year, so that's good news for us, another form of economic development. Item number ten, we got the OPP, the highly safety, the safe unit, they're talking to us about what happens on the trails and how they will police that, that particular, the Algonquin Trail and the Ottawa Valley Recreation Trail, all the way from Smith Falls up to Mallow. One of, of interest, as you know, there's a management plan for the Algonquin Trail out there at this time, and the OPP has offered to review that document from a safety point of view, and, and give us some ideas. Item number eleven, you can find the local, which is on page ninety-one, it's tried to capture all three partners in this particular initiative, you will see it if you go to page ninety-one, on ours, it will instantly identify the Algonquin Trail, and that'll be incorporated into the, the actual load itself. If you look at Ottawa Valley Recreation Trail Phase Two survey costs, you will see that's on page ninety-two, and if I can scroll to page ninety-two, I'll try to explain some of that to you. You see the cost there of seventy-five thousand dollars, and as, as you're aware, CP has agreed to pay fifty thousand dollars towards that. And if they go forward with that, that means there's twenty-five thousand dollars left, and it's shared by the three partners, and, and the percentages that are presented there, with seventy-two percent on the Redford, of the seventy-five, of the twenty-five thousand dollars left. However, if you look at that, there are two items on there, DND South, DND North, for twenty thousand dollars. If that comes off the seventy-five thousand dollars, then, then there, there's only twenty-five thousand dollars, and we'd only be paid five thousand dollars, or seventy-two percent of the five thousand dollars, so that is, is yet to, to be seen going forward. Item number thirteen, is an email received from the former mayor of the United District of Headclere Mariah, just to let members of committee, of council, I should say, know, as you are aware, we've been receiving many emails and communications from Headclere Mariah, saying that they were not aware of what was going on, and there was no consultation, et cetera, et cetera. But I think it's clear, when you read, these are just one example of, of correspondence that, that has been put in place by, by those in Headclere Mariah, clearly states by the mayor, that in fact, he has kept them aware of, of what we are trying to do, that it is in fact a multipurpose trail, and we've never deviated from that particular situation, and it's clear, from the, the correspondence we see, we see there, that, that is, that is the case, and the mayor has articulated, former mayor, I should say, has articulated that very clearly. Item number fourteen, the official plan, legal advice and opt-out letters, the, the actual legal opinion can be found on page ninety-nine. As you know, there are some people who are not particularly pleased with the official plan, and individuals who want to opt out, and it's clear, from the opinion that was given by, by a lawyer, that you cannot do that. It is a requirement of the municipality to include all property within the official plan. So that's clarity on the situation. Item number fifteen, I'd like to make counsel aware of the fact that, after lobbying for two, three years, talking to three years, talking to, to Lynn Dolan and Larry McCabe and all of those guys down at the AMO board, that I lobbied to get the OSUM conference here and we're successful, I have to point out, that the OSUM conference will be coming here in 2019 to the county of Redford. That's good news. Again, it's all about bringing people into the community. It's an economic development opportunity to showcase Redford County. One of the, I have to say, one of the concerns that the OSUM board of directors had is bringing it up to, to Redford County is they would not get the type of response and attendance that they would get in, say, Southern Ontario. I assured them, I assured them, so please don't let me down, that we would have a wonderful conference with unbelievable attendance and probably have set a record for attendance at this particular conference. They're looking at a minimum of 100. I suggested to them 185 at a minimum. So we've got a little bit of work to do, but nonetheless, it's a great opportunity to showcase Redford County. The last time this was here was 47 years ago and it's, it's events like that, I think we have to continue to, to seek out, to bring individuals in, into our areas. Very pleased to put, to tell you that that's happening in 2019. So if you see the resolution there, DPCC 180215, moved by the chair second by committee, that County Council approves that funds be provided through the county of Redford 2018 provisions for unallocated funds budget maximum of $20,000 to cover the cost of up to five members of County Council and three staff to attend the OSUM conference in Niagara Falls from May 2000, uh, May 2, 4, 2018 and for the purchase of promotional material. They're suggesting that we go down there and, and really showcase and promote the county of Redford. I think that's very important. We would have a table there. For anyone who's gone to conferences, you know that the following years' conferences always represented at, at any conference that you go, go to. And so this is no exception. Table has been ordered, there are being reserved and we have to go down there and talk about how we intend to show the world how great Redford County is. So that's the background to that particular situation. Draft pieces at risk guide, Resolution DPCC 180217, moved by the chair second by council, that County councils adopt the following resolutions pertaining to draft pieces at risk. And Warden, if I could, I follow my council member, Peket, to eliminate the warehouses and that and so forth and, and go right down to the, the resolve that the county of Redford circulate this resolution to the Premier of Ontario Minister of Natural Resources and Forestry NPP, John Yakubowski, the Ontario Forestry Coalition, Ontario Forestry Intersesting Association, and all municipal councils of Ontario requesting that they endorse and support this resolution and communicate their support to the Ontario Government. Item number 17, memorandum of understanding, the Ontario Municipal Cycling Commuter, let's say Fortmore Commuter Cycling, Resolution number DPCC 180218, moved by chair second by, by committee, that County Council executes a memorandum of understanding with the county of Redford and each participating municipality as it relates to funding under the Ontario Municipal Commuter Cycling Funding Programme. As you see, seven municipalities within the county of Redford were successful in receiving funding through that, that particular program for the Algonquin Trail and two municipalities will be receiving funding for the KMP. In total, approximately $712,000 in funding will be received by municipalities across Redford County. An agreement established with the municipalities was that the county of Redford would complete the application and would contribute 20% of municipal share towards the application, $6,250 per municipality and municipalities would provide $25,000, which is the funding received from the, from the program during the first year towards the Algonquin Trail. Tabled is the proposed memorandum of understanding that will be established between the county and each participating municipality. Bylaws under, bylaws, Resolution number DPCC 180216, moved by chair seconded by committee, that County Council pass a bylaw to enter into an agreement with Her Majesty the Queen and Right of Ontario for representing the Minister of Economic Development and Trade and Growth, I should say, to undertake the summer company program through the enterprise Redford County. Further, a bylaw being about to execute an agreement with the Prophets of Ontario Minister of Development and Growth to undertake the summer company program through the enterprise Redford County is hereby appealed. Item number 19 is the Ontario Municipal Commuter Cycling Application, Resolution number DPCC 180219, moved by the chair, that County Council pass a bylaw to execute an agreement with Her Majesty the Queen and Right of the Prophets of Ontario as represented by the Ministry of Transportation, Ontario Municipal Cycling Programme 2017-2018. The county was successful in receiving funding from the Ontario Municipal Cycling Programme towards improvement on the trail. Work as well as hardening shoulders on applicable county roads up to $372,360.48. I don't know where the 48 cents comes from, but nonetheless, it's there. Item number 20 is Calabooian District Snowmobile Club, Resolution number DPCC 180220, moved by chair second by committee, that County Council pass a bylaw, which I'm in schedule one of bylaw number 10617, being a bylaw to execute land use agreements with multiple snowmobile clubs and the snow county, country snowmobile association for a period of five years commencing December the 1st, 2017 to April the 30th, 2022, to include a collector to the Algonquin Trail over the Calabooian District Snowmobile Club from Division Street to Sandpoint Wharf. And you can see the background on that, it's really just to connect to the trail. All of which is respectfully submitted by myself as chair, committee members Eamon, Farr, Keller, McCain, Miller and McRae.
Thank you. We'll go back to information item number one, the activity tracker. Two, the watershed study. Three, the inter, oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Councilor Dunning here.
Thank you, Madam Warden. In January, after I think perhaps the first meeting, there was comment in this with respect to this initiative, that at this point it was unclear whether there was, there was a momentum, movement towards the establishment of this. I'm just curious if, if there is any further analysis of where this initiative may be going at this point or if it is still insisting on comments in January.
Would you like to, I think that there, there's always going to be momentum with this kind of group and I'll let Mr. Kelly answer the question.
Thanks, Warden. That's through you. I would agree, there is momentum, there are two sides to this, so the, the federal regulatory body, the ministry, the Ministry of Natural Resources is moving forward with their study. I would say that the group headed by the Riverkeeper and some of the supporters of the Ottawa Riverkeeper are supporting the, an actual council. Again, this is just a study to see if the council's needed. We're getting emails on both sides in terms of support. This is really registering that if you're a community that wants to comment, you should. We will be doing it on behalf of staff and council from previous resolutions, but again, local municipalities affected, which we all are, the watershed is a very big area, should log on and also put their own comments in.
Thank you, Mr. Waddam.
Thank you. I'm not sure if Councilor Dunning spoke to this, but you'll see on Facebook now, there's a big push for public consultation. It's all over Facebook, the group that is proposing that, so they're using social media to, to gather input and it's one of these, I believe it's one of these paid sponsors on Facebook because it appeared on that personal page. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I haven't seen it yet. Anything further on the watershed study? All right, moving on, number three, to the international plowing match. That would be so exciting if we could get it here in a few years. Number four, the economic development strategy that we saw this morning. Councilor Dunning here.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Yes, indeed, I have briefly skimmed through that available, but I, there was oversight on my part, but this is March draft and I'm wondering that, certainly my intention over this carefully over the next month or so, is there an anticipation of when a final version or when you would be seeking comments on the draft?
Mr. Kelly?
Thank you, Warden, through you. I, I would suggest that we did mention it's a living document, but in terms of actually making an adopted document, so to speak, but by the end of, by the end of March would be too.
Thank you. Anything further? All right, we'll move on to the transit tax. And the OBTAs nominations. Number seven, celebrating women in business. I will be bringing greetings to this and then rush right over to, to our social services Actually, in this, it says the Best Western, but is it, no, I've done it correctly, or is that just for the craves?
It's two different sessions.
Oh, it's two different sessions. Thank you. I wasn't sure where to go. Number eight, the summer company. Number nine, the harvest. 10, the OPP policing our trail. Number 11, the logo. Thank you for the explanation, Chair Sweet. I really like the logo and I like that it incorporates all of us. Number 12, the trail phase two survey costs. Number 13, the letter from the former mayor of Headclare Mariah. Number 14, the opt-out letters. Moving on to resolutions, the OSUM conference. Any questions, concerns? Councilor Robinson?
Thank you, Warden. A lot of congratulations, I was involved in lobbying for the last three years to get this. Excuse me. I'm, excuse me. I'm just wondering what the logistics are for maybe it will be a hold for the OSUM conference and whether or not a discussion is taking place with where and why we're going to Redford for three years.
So I believe that we've already booked the Best Western as the sort of largest conference space and the Holiday Inn to for overflow beds. Is that correct?
Thanks, Chair. I can, I can answer some of the questions through you. The, the part of the venue needed to be an all-in-one space. So the only available all-in-one space was the Best Western in terms of number of rooms and the conference area and plenary sessions. Part of that also is a fairly large trade show where the conference makes money to, to bring in booths and otherwise. So there's, there's really no other large centre right now in the county of Redford geography. We, we looked at other options. To split it up was not an option for the conference.
Secondary? That's important. I love it. And it was, of course, Councilor Sweet that's been lobbying this for three years. So serious congratulations for, for bringing it to us. Councilor Dunning here.
Thank you very much, Madam Warden. I think it's precipitous or serendipitous, rather, that on this same agenda was the discussion of the IPM because for anybody that may not recall or was not involved, those same comments, Councilor Sweet were made of the international plowing match at the time that Redford County was seeking to host that, that it was far too remote, far too likely to fail, far too likely to not draw a sufficient number of people. And I'm sure the small urban municipalities will demonstrate once again, as we did in 94, when ultimately attendance at the international plowing match formed the basis for the 911 system throughout Redford County, that it is, it is always a pleasure for us to demonstrate how wrong people can be when they would suggest that we cannot do these things in Redford County.
Thank you for those comments. And Mr. Deakley is just pointing out that the last page of our yearbook that's on your desk is a blast from the past and it is the, the plowing match from, was it 94? So one before I even lived here. So I, I hope, I'm hopeful that we will, that we will get it in 2020.
We're looking for it, Chair.
Councilor Sweet?
When I picked the pitch down in Windsor to get this in 2016, the, the projects that I, I presented at that time, one was the international plowing match to demonstrate that we could in fact put on something like that. The officer, the event had come up into the, to the county, the Association of Ontario Road Superintendents, which we posted down in Hornborough, and Expo 150, which was a 45,000 attendance type situation. So I convinced them that we had the capability of putting that type of content on. The Councilor Robinson, the facility that we, that had been chosen can handle approximately 265 delegates in one, one room. And I hope to have at least 200 of them there and person at the seams. That is the only area that we, we can see that we handle that type of situation. And we've been, we're almost, or not almost, we're, we're planning a companions programme. There is a request for a golf tournament that, that is template that they have in place. We'll be able to do that. We have a multitude of different golf courses up here that we can put together and we're planning something really spectacular, I would suggest, for the companions programme. And just wait and the, the menu of that will be coming out. I think we can really do a fine job with that. All we need is attendance and every, if everyone here brought two members of their council to the table, we've got 56 people sold to the conference already. The other argument that I made, to be honest with you, is that most of, most of the OSUM conferences are held in Southern Ontario and nobody usually gets the opportunity to drive to the places that they're talking about. Niagara Falls, Chad, Godrich, places of that nature. This is an opportunity for Eastern Ontario to, to come together, places like Hoxbury, Cornwall, Elton, Brockville, et cetera, Atlantic Perth, higher areas here can come to this conference for the first time. I think we can, I think we can rule among the waters as far as attendance is concerned, but we need everyone's support here to bring at least two councillors to this particular event and we've got to meet. Thank you.
Thank you. I already brought it to my council, which Debbie can attest to. I already let them know that this was coming and I still am not so sure how, how Niagara Falls qualifies as a small urban municipality, but you know, semantics, I guess. Councilor Stack?
Thank you. I was a little bit more optimistic. I was thinking of drafting, you know, 75 or 80, if all of the council members showed up. We, like most municipalities, have an allowance in our budget for one conference for every member of council a year that is historically under spent. So I made a note here, I'm going to back air council and suggest, and I, I'm far away from Pemberg as anybody is, that we make an exception next year and allow for expenses for travel for the three days, covering mileage expenses and that, you know, obviously, you know, we want to make the rooms available town to town, so we're in travelling distance where members can travel back and forth. So it's my intent as council, make that exception above and beyond the, their regular allowance for, for a conference.
Excellent idea. And Bob didn't say this, but he and Sonya are willing to host anybody, you know, that has a long drive. Pembro was so close.
I think about Pembro.
Hope to the valley, right?
That's right. Okay. Anything further on the OSUM conference and some of us attending this year in Niagara Falls to promote and hopefully bring people here from that area? All right. Number 16, the species at risk draft and all those warehouses. All right, seeing nothing, the MOU for the cycling. Your bylaws summer company, the Ontario Municipal Cycling Application. Councilor Robinson?
Thank you, Warden. Just have a question. Probably a demo.
Can we justify the county roads that are going to have the arse to shoulders?
Yeah, we had a conversation about this and now it's escaped me. I'm sorry, Mr. Kelly, please.
That's fine, through you, Warden. So as applied for, Tullowby Road, Stewartville Road and River Road were the three that included in the application along with sections of the Gombe Trail.
Thank you. Anything further? And number 20, the Scrimmobile Club. The report as a whole? Can I get a mover, please?
Oh.
Thank you, all those in favor? Opposed, if any? I'm going to use this as a doorstop. All right, it is noon. Rose, do we know if lunch is here? Should we? Oh, it is here and is it hot? All right, so instead of forging ahead with Health Committee, I think we'll take half an hour max so we can get through this agenda, yes, 12:30, 12:31? Thank you, everyone. Yeah, that's right.
Good afternoon, everyone. And we will reconvene this meeting and I will throw this over to the Vice Chair of the Health Committee, Counselor Kingsbury.
I'm sorry. I totally lost it this afternoon, but...
Thank you, Madam Warden. Members of County Council, we here Health Committee wish to report and recommend as follows. Item number one is resident population. And you can see there we have a total of the two homes of 342. Item number two is the Chantilly and then Health Integration Witness Information. And again, you can see the numbers there for the manor is 191 and for the lodge is 294. And you can also see that those numbers keep climbing as our population changes. Item number three is emergency services, 2018 surge capacity update. I'll leave that for you to read. Item number four is paramedic service. Sierra Team, on January 22nd, 2018, the County of Brentford Paramedic Service Sierra Team completed a training day focused on preparedness to respond to biological and severe flu outbreak amongst other things. Item number five is intermunicipal call response. Work continues towards the resolution of intermunicipal call response issues with the city of Ottawa. On Monday, February 5th, 2018, approximately 7:30 to 8:00 hours, five County of Brentford paramedic group were diverted to the city of Ottawa from across the County of Brentford. I'm sure everyone knows the outcome of what happened in this case. Anyway, there's a rest there for you to read. Item number six, Chantilly Local Health Integrated Network. The highlights from the Chantilly and Lynn meetings held on January 24th, 2018 can be accessed through the following links and I have it down there for you. Item number seven, resident abuse neglect in Ontario Long Term Care. And I'll leave that up for you to read. Item number eight, Advantage Ontario Advancing Senior Care Annual General Meeting and Convention. The 2018 Advantage Ontario Advanced Senior Care Annual General Meeting and Convention is scheduled for April the 16th to the 18th in Toronto. Michelle Maschini, Director of Long Term Care, Mr. Mike Blackmore, Administrator of Mercy Lodge, will be receiving on roundtable staff. Item number nine, Annual Fire Inspection, Long Term Manor, and it's held on January 22nd. And very favorable. Item number 10, Brentford County District Health, Public Health Inspection, Long Term Manor. And obviously, one line under this, overall, the kitchen and the servers are well harmonized and well maintained. Item number 11, Enter, Outbreak, Mercy Lodge. And the information is there for you to read as well. Item number 12, Letter of Gratitude, Mercy Lodge, and a line under that, a note read, "God bless you all for the wonderful care and love shown to my mother." It's always nice to hear back from people that care that they receive of these moments. Item number 13, Mercy Lodge Ladies Auxiliary Donation for Council Information. Mercy Lodge Ladies Auxiliary presented a check to Mercy Lodge on Wednesday, February 14th, 2018 in the amount of $10,000 that will be used for program services and items for the residents of Mercy Lodge. That's always good news to hear, especially a large amount like that in the house. All of which is respectfully submitted, James, if you may ask, more Chair, of the committee members, Don Caster, Don Group, Kingsbury Lodge, and Berwick, and I agree.
Thank you. So we will go back to information item number one. Two. Why are you laughing? Counselor Stack, did you ask? Oh. Three. Four, the CRI team. Five, the Injured Municipal Call Response. I'm sure everybody's read about that in the news. Number six, the Lynn. Number seven. Number eight. Number nine, the Fire Inspection. Number 10, the Health Unit. Number 11, the Outbreak at Mercy. Number 12, the Letter of Gratitude. Congratulations to everybody at Mercy Lodge, Shelly. That's always lovely to go, thank you, in such a difficult time. And number 13, the Auxiliary Donation. The report as a whole? Can I get a mover, please?
So moved.
All those in favor? Excellent. And now we'll move on to, oh, thank you. Chair Robinson, with the Social Services Committee, please.
Warden, I will start in attendance of my task, Counselor, I'm on the chair.
Excellent. Counselor Redhall.
Thank you, Warden, thank you very much. That'll do it. Members of County Council, if you or Social Services Committee wish to report, recommend as follows. For information, item one, the 2016 and 2017 Brentford County Social Housing Rentering Waitlist has status comparison. And as you notice, our numbers are up again. And then just a note that the 100,000 who are waiting less for housing, this is the 731st, 128 are currently living in a social housing unit, but are waiting for a transfer to another unit due to a change in accommodation needs. Item number two, the Child Care Stats, 2016, 2017, Care Fee Subsidies, status comparison. And the numbers are up considerably compared to last year. Currently, there's a County Central Waitlist, total of 323. Item number three is the Care Force Case Load Stats. Item four, Resolution, like before, hourly rate for resource teachers, Resolution number SSCCC 1802-12. Moved by Chair, second by Committee. The County Council approves an increase to resource teachers' cap rate of $14 per hour plus mandatory benefits to $60 per hour plus mandatory benefits approved for 2018. New Bill 148, Fair Workplaces, Better Jobs Act 2017, minimum wage is increased to $14 per hour 2018 and to $50 per hour 2019. Plus recommended, the three-hour teacher cap rate of $14 per hour is increased to $60 per hour. The increase in expenses will be covered through the new 100% provisionally allocated expectancy plan funding. And early, early in childcare funding will not affect the county's Brentford allocation. Item number five, Bylaws. Amendment to Bylaw 108-17, Ontario Early Years Trial and Family Services Agreement, Resolution number SSCCC 1802-13. Moved by Chair, second by Committee. The Bylaw number 108-17, adopted on October 25th, 2017. Authorizing the Board of Clerk to execute the Ontario Transfer Payment Agreement with the Ministry of Medicine for the 2018-2019 Ontario Early Years Trial and Family Centers be amended to add a missing agreement number one to reflect the journey together funding. Item number six, 2018 Childcare Ontario Transfer Payment Agreement. Resolution number SSCCC 1802-14. Moved by Chair, second by Committee. That Bylaw be adopted to authorize the County of Brentford Childcare Early Years Division to enter into a childcare Ontario Transfer Payment Agreement with the Ministry of Medicine. Seven, Amendment to Bylaw 50-17, Licensed Home Childcare Agreement. Resolution number SSCCC 1802-15. Moved by Chair, second by Committee. The Bylaw number 50-17, being a Bylaw, authorizing the County of Brentford to enter into agreements with licensed home childcare, childcare service providers be amended to authorize the County of Brentford to enter into a funding agreement for licensed home childcare for parents and visiting members. Background there. And eight, Amendment to, excuse me, Bylaw 67-15. Agreement with the Ministry of Health, Long Term Care, for funding to support the Healthy Kids Community Challenge. So it's Resolution SSCCC 1802-16. Moved by Chair, second by Committee. That Bylaw number 67-15, authorizing the County of Brentford to enter into agreements with the Ministry of Health and Long Term Care for funding to support the Healthy Kids Community Challenge initiative. Be amended to add, amend an agreement under one, which supports the Ministry of Health, Long Term Care, provided the County of Brentford with up to $137,500 in additional one-time funding for the 2018 funding year for the Healthy Kids Community Challenge. All of which is respectfully submitted by Chair Debbie Robinson and Mr. Eamonn Blackmore, so our committee, we stock.
Hey, Jed, I did just notice it says summer and I don't know what this is. I read it wrong as well, sorry Jed.
Thank you. We'll go back to information item number one. Two, the childcare statistics. Counselor Dwyer-Hugh.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Perhaps through you too, Ms. Mulholland, the, I'm just curious, the numbers are, there's certain variation and there has been some increase. There seems to have been a profound spike in November families in 2017. I'm curious, is that, while the convention children figure doesn't seem to have changed substantially from preceding or the following month, I'm wondering, is that a typo or what might have driven that dramatic spike in the families column in 2017?
Would you like to respond to that?
Absolutely, through you, Warden. I'm actually, I'm looking at that number and most likely it is correct, although I will double check the number. You're speaking of is 391?
Yes.
Yes. It could be the result of an overlap because you'll also see a spike in the number of children. So very often we'll have an overlap September, October, even seeping into November for summer care going off and on, but I will double check that number and bring that back to the committee. Excellent.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I don't know why you're looking at that, I apologize. Anything further on two? Three. Moving into resolutions, the bylaws for the resource, Counselor Robinson.
Thank you, Warden, just a question that I was looking at here. So at $16 an hour, so with the minimum wage now being $14, or $2 above the minimum. In 2019, it's been $15, so do we anticipate a new resolution having in 2019 adding, going to $17? Or is this not as dictated by the province for the next two years?
So you'll have to excuse me, I'm just learning the protocol, the council.
No.
Through you, Warden. So what we're hoping is this year we will just raise it up to the amount requested. Have a look at where we sit on a budget, how much it's going to cost. And also, is there an impact? And then basically reflect and bring back to committee, potentially, yes, for next year to raise the allocation and it is not dictated by the province, so.
Thank you. All right, anything further on four? And bylaws, five, the early years. Number six, the transfer payment. Seven, the home childcare agreement. Number eight, the agreement with the Ministry of Health and Long Term Care. The report as a whole? Can I get a mover, please?
So moved.
Thank you, all those in favor? Thank you. And we will move on with Chair Stack and the Finance and Administration Committee report. Thank you.
Thank you, Warden. We here Finance and Administration Committee wish to report, recommend as follows. Number one is the Council Remuneration for January. Two is a remuneration expense account for Council Eamonn's Eamonn representation that we requested. Three is the National Volunteer Week. And Mr. Fred Blackstein offered to formally present his Order of Canada and had it received by the Governor General in 2006 at Rio Hall in the county of Brentford for public display. He has always credited numerous volunteers that he's worked with, but the success of the events he's been involved in. And Mr. Blackstein feels the National Volunteer Week in 2018 in April was an excellent opportunity to recognize volunteers. Number four is the Association Municipalities Policy Act, the two items of Main Street Divatization and Resolution on 50. Five, Eastman Ontario Leadership Council, a news release. Six is council remuneration. And this is point the Human Resource Department will be undertaking a general survey of all counties in Ontario to paying both remuneration bylaws and annual compensation paid to, out to the elected for 2017. Also, Mr. Deakley will then strike a remuneration committee, as council has set up in the past, last year each term, to look at Brentford County's council. Seven, council remuneration compensation surveys, local municipal staff salary surveys that are listed there as resources the department will supply. Eight is workplace and sexual harassment. And the SLT have agreed that Corporate Policy 8, National 9, a workplace sexual violence and harassment prevention policy program will be renewed by all departments and employees as a proactive step for promoting a safe work environment. Nine is Information and Privacy Commissioner of Ontario Stats, the 17. And Resolutions, number 10. Resolution number FA-CC-18-02-22. Moved by Chair and second by Committee. Whereas the Federation of Canadian Municipalities represents interest in municipalities and policy program matters that fall within the federal jurisdiction, therefore be resolved that the council of corporations in County of Brentford endorses Counselor Lynn Doncaster to stand for election on FCM's Board of Directors for 2018-19 term. And further that the County of Brentford assumes all costs assured that associated with Counselor Doncasters attending the FCM Board of Directors meetings. Number 11, North Brentford Long Term Care Resolution, number FA-CC-18-02-25. Moved by Chair and second by Committee. That the County Council room and staff be directed to send letter to North Brentford Long Term Care to clarify the county's position that the amended letter of understanding dated November 28, 2011 was drafted with intent of supporting operating expenses at North Brentford Long Term Care while excluding capital investments and transferred to reserves or other funds. And that this letter also advises North Brentford Long Term Care that the county will allow them to keep the $25,230 from the 2016 reconciliation as a one-time exceptional payment. And that this letter also advised North Brentford Long Term Care that payments for 2017 and forward will be restricted to supporting operating expenses only and recorded on statement of operations and changes in fund balances and contained with the audited financial statements of North Brentford Long Term Care. Number 12, Bylaw, Remuneration Bylaw, Resolution number FA-CC-18-02-23. Moved by Chair and second by Committee. The County Council approves a 2% increase to remuneration for the board and the members of council. And further, that a bylaw to provide the remuneration of members of council Brentford County passed at this session of County Council. Number 13, User Fee Bylaw, Resolution number FA-CC-18-02-26. Moved by Chair and second Committee, that a bylaw... by Committee, that a bylaw to establish and require payment of user fees and charges be adopted at this session of County Council, and further that the previous user fee bylaw 15-17 be repealed. Fourteen, UPE Local 1508 Woncher Matter Negotiations, resolution number F/A-CC-18-02-28, moved by Chair and seconded by Committee, that the County Council approved the employment bylaw, number two being a bylaw concerning a collective agreement with the Canadian Union of Public Employees, UPE Local 1508 Woncher Matter be adopted at this session of County Council. And fifteen is employment bylaw number one, resolution number F/A-CC-18-02-29, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that County Council approve the following changes to employment bylaw number one effective January 1, 2018, as listed here, I'm sure you've read them all. So sixteen is revisions to corporate services, corporate policies and procedures, human resources, resolution number F/A-CC-18-02-30, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that County Council approve the recommended changes to the Corporate Policy E-08, generally without pay be approved, and further that a bylaw to amend the bylaws 63-03, being a bylaw to establish human resources, corporate policies and procedures to the County of Brentford be adopted at this session of County Council, all of which is respectfully submitted by myself, Chair, committee members, Doncaster, Dunn, who were being pegged, Robinson, Sweet and Miss Daskin.
Thank you. I love the efficiency of all the chairs today. We'll move back to information item number one. Number two. Number three, National Volunteer Week, that's the lovely of Mr. Blackstein. Number four, the AMO Policy Update. I did speak to the Main Street Revitalization at Finance, and then I was in touch with Minister Will's office. The criteria for spending this money has not been released yet, as soon as I have some informational email it out. They haven't really formulated how, you know, our up to works, I know that everybody's done up to amounts, so we'll, I'll keep you informed on that. Number five, EOLC. Number six, County Council Remuneration. Number seven, the surveys. Number eight, workplace sexual harassment. Number nine, the Privacy Commissioner. Moving on to resolutions, FCM, so that Councilor Doncaster, oh, yes, Councilor Stack.
Yeah, just to make a comment, I, for one, am going to FCM this year to support them, they actually, my experience was a few years ago, caught by surprise a bit, but they actually run elections for these positions in Ontario, I figure it's 11 or 12, of which six are appointed and six are elected, and as I said at FNA, when I got there, I found out the next night, I had to give a five-minute speech, and people actually had tables set up and handing out buttons and doing that, so it takes, you know, some effort to get elected to the Board of Directors, so anybody else is going, if anybody else plans to go 2018 based on plan because the support's needed to get elected to the Board.
Thank you for the, okay, number 11, North Brentford Long-Term Care. Councilor Dunne, you.
Thank you, excuse me, thank you, Madam Warden. Perhaps if this could be separate from the reported address separately, please.
Certainly, Mr. Hutton? That's, okay, we will, we will keep this number 11 aside. I'll move on to number 12, the Remuneration Bylaw. Number 13, the user bylaw fee and schedule. Number 14, the QB negotiation. Congratulations to all that were involved, Mr. Beasley, Mercy. Number 15, the employment bylaw. Number 16, the revisions to the corporate policies and procedures. The report as a whole outside of number 11? Can I get a mover, please?
So.
Thank you, all those in favor? Opposed, if any? Excellent, we'll move back to number 11, Councilor Dunne, you.
Thank you, Madam Warden. With regards to this, it seems to me, on reading what the agreement and the auditor's statements that are included in the package, that the intent, what the spirit and the letter were clear in the agreement, that there seems to be committed a elaborate formula developed for the agreement as to how it would function. So for that reason, as I see that it is clear, and in fact, that in two different reserve accounts, there is all $10 million that North Brentford Long-Term Care has, $800 and some thousand dollars in a special reserve, and another $76,000 in a separate reserve, seems to me that the funds are there, the agreement was clear, so for that reason, I was in support of the overall agreement, but I wish to have this separate so that I could pull in opposition.
Is there anything further on number 11? Then I will, nothing? Then I will call for the vote, all those in favor? Opposed?
Number 11 you had.
Yeah, just number 11. Yeah, all those in favor? Opposed? Oh.
You got a draw.
Then, who are you in favor of this? You're the only hand I missed there.
I, I'm just getting caught up, I, I'm just picking one actually, because I'm voting for you guys.
Okay.
Because we covered it all pretty quickly.
Let me give Councilor McKay a minute here.
Is it all getting level?
Can I get a show of hands, again, I'm sorry, all those in favor? No, no, oh, yes, yes, it could be, it could be a tie.
I'll be voting for it.
Okay, so once again, all those in favor? Opposed, if any? Okay, the resolution passes, thank you, Councilor McKay, thank you for taking my moment to, to read that. All right. And we are moving on to bylaws, who has the bylaws? Councilor Robinson.
Hi, Warden, moved by myself to second by Council Star, bylaws listed on number 11, pass here to a scheduled age, County Council identified February 2018, being for three times in pass.
Thank you, you've heard the resolution before you, any comments, concerns, questions with regard to the bylaws? All those in favor? Excellent, oh, goodbye. Are there any notice of motions? Are there any member, no, there are no members writing motions? Is there any new business? I would just like to mention, I'm not sure if everybody knew this, the President of the ODTA, Chris Insberger, his mother passed about a week and a half ago, her wake is at Sore Funeral Home in Eaganville today from 2:00 to 4:00, I believe from 7:00 to 9:00, so for those of you that would like to pay your respects, obviously, he is a large part of our Rendeford County family and has done a lot for the County of Rendeford. Councilor Dunne, you, did you have something?
I did, thank you, Madam Warden, perhaps all of the County Councils assembled here are aware of the initiative rolling out of the history of community safety correctional services in collaboration with the Ontario Fire Marshals and draft consultation documents on revisions to the regs with respect to fire departments, there is, I note, in the Eaganville Leader, an article on, to that effect, I have not had the opportunity to read, but could have some significant impact to the fire services provided within each municipality, and it is certainly my understanding, our initiative on this was begun when our Fire Chief delivered to us a correspondence sent from the Rendeford County Fire Chiefs Association to the ministry with respect to some very significant concerns about the process and the results of this. Ultimately, we've now had to move fairly quickly, because the comment period on the draft regulations ends on the 11th of March for two of them, and on the 18th of March for a third, I note this is, if you are not aware, do not feel badly, because we only became aware about a week ago, there was, if someone was to design a system whereby they were keeping a lid on any dissemination of information, I hope they've come up with one that's more efficient than this process, but it would certainly move you, I think, to develop a response to this, it is my understanding that the letter of the County Fire Chiefs Association was by unanimous agreement.
Thank you for that, Councilor Dunne, you, and I've been living this Ontario Fire Marshal nightmare for the last few weeks, and just so that you all know, our Fire Chiefs met about a week and a half ago, and they had only received this information about a week before that, there was a very unusual survey sent out, I believe in November, if I'm not mistaken.
October 31st.
October 31st, there you go. And there was one question on the survey that had nothing to do with certification of firefighters, I'm sure many of our firefighters, our fire departments didn't even respond to this survey monkey, because there was only one question, and I completely agree with my colleague from Adamston Rowley, that this was done in a very unusual way, I will tell you, at the technical table, they were all full-time fire departments but one, and mostly large cities, so just so you're aware of that, there were no fire departments from Rendeford County involved in this technical table, I believe that this is very similar to other legislation that's been brought down by the Ontario Fire Marshal's Office that we absolutely just cannot keep up with, I think this speaks to our Fire Chiefs not wanting to be involved in the fire medic program, which we just absolutely cannot afford, and we have a perfectly good paramedic service, and I think our fire service works very well here, so, yeah, in my other role as a Fire Chief wife, I will tell you that this has really taken up a lot of my life at home, just trying to figure out the best way to address this, not only with the OFM, but with both the Ministry of Correctional Services, but also the Ministry of Labor, and in fact, the Minister of Health, so there's been a lot of crossover, and I urge you, I'm sure, Ali did speak to this at our last meeting, we actually called our Fire Chief in to a meeting that he wasn't even supposed to be at, in order to get this before the OFM, prior to the March 11 deadline, so I urge you, if you haven't seen it, please find out from your Fire Chiefs what this is all about, it's, we really need the OFM to understand that we are bound by, you know, our volunteer, our paid duty fire department structure, and the fact that our municipalities on their own cannot afford to be sending firefighters to Ravenhurst, to the college, you know, a week a year for certification, and I'm sure you've heard in the news that there is a proposal between the OFM and Algonquin College to have some certification here locally, that because of the striking etc., that's sort of been, now, it's, it's coming back now, that they're all steady and certain, but this does not, that still will not speak to the certification of our brand-new firefighters beginning in 2019. So if anybody, I'm urging, please to talk to your firefighters about this. Councilor Reimold?
Thank you, Warden. We had, our Fire Chief brought this to our attention immediately after he heard tell about it, and we did have some discussion on it after our past council meeting, and he is very, very concerned about it, as have we are too, so I'm not sure what the, you know, what the input of this is going to be, but it's certainly going to have a real impact on, you know, especially the volunteer fire departments, each mentioned about the full-time representation as opposed to, you know, to the volunteers, so it's not, I don't think it's going to be good for, you know, for the smaller communities, that's for sure.
And quite frankly, speaking for my own municipality, this is, we cannot afford to do this, so, nor do the firefighters have the time to do it, we were saying at the lunch table today, I mean, if you have two weeks vacation, chances are you're taking a week off in the summer with your kids, and you probably want to go hunting, or you want to go south in the winter, and so it just, this model just does not work for rural Ontario, especially the distance for us. Anyway, so that's sort of my rant from the session, is there anything further on that? Thank you very much for bringing that up, Michael, I really appreciate it. Any other new business? All right, we have no closed meeting, who's got the confirmatory bylaw? Councilor Robinson?
Thank you, Warden, moved by myself, second by Council Star, the bylaw to confirm proceedings of the Council of the County of Brentford, at the meeting held on February 28, 2018, be now numbered, duly read three times in pass.
Thank you for the resolution, all those in favor? Excellent, if you'd like to adjourn this. I've got Councilor Kingsbury in, Councilor Reimold first, all those in favor? Opposed, if any? Great work today, guys, I know that we were a little slim on our numbers, but I think we did a great job, so thank you.